So we basically.
Yeah, so yeah, we'll talk more about that, but you know, it would be, it would be, you know, um, basically an independent person so that everybody knows if this has been done, you know, it's, it's not who's going to do it. As you know, I, I oppose that position. I don't want people to think that.
You're steering up one of the.
Correct, correct. Absolutely fair, absolutely.
I'm wanting to get that.
But we'll, we'll talk about this one.
Did you tap the table yet? Okay, yeah, no.
I have no idea. Yeah, somebody got a turn.
What'd you say? No, I only cut the tail end.
I didn't start.
You got, you got the gist of it, you know me.
It's cold.
Oh, come on. Yes, you're right. But if somebody is cold and they feel the need to turn on the heat, the device is right over on the.
Turn on, turn on.
Have at it. No, 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 necessary. Oh, that's.
Oh, wait, actually, I think, uh.
It is sixty-three in here, so hit sixty-eight.
Yeah, I think we have a problem.
We're a little chilly.
Checks. You have your checks? Great. There should be a line there. I don't expect it to be long.
We had a turnout last week.
So anybody can pick them up in there.
A pool?
I had, I had some news. Oh, perfectly fine. Yeah, if you send them around, we'll just deal with it. We'll all have a chance to look at them and deal with them next time. Perfect. Thank you. We have about two minutes. All right. Uh, it is seven o'clock. We'll call, uh, this meeting to order. The sole order for Tuesday, April ninth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the first item that we have on the agenda is actually a public hearing. Um, as noted in the, uh, the, uh, prior meeting, um, prior meetings. EverSource is doing tree cutting, uh, around town, uh, which includes, uh, tree cutting along, uh, Hallsdale Road, which is a scenic road in town. Uh, they requested that we hold a public hearing just to make sure that the public is well aware of what is going on and can ask questions. Um, Crystal, does it hear you? Do you hear from EverSource?
Yeah, yes. My name is Chris Montal. I'm on the app. So I was great. I'm like filling in for Crystal, because she knows she has a G.
Thank you.
And she is still on sole restoration.
Not a problem. Thank you. So, um, as indicated, there's, uh, tree cutting going on around town. I actually was able to drive around town with Crystal several weeks ago. Um, they have noted a variety of trees already have been marked all around town. Um, we also discussed, there's about a handful of additional requests that were made to the town via email. Uh, and so those were added to, uh, the, uh, list of trees to come down. Um, so, you know, EverSource, I think, has been very open and transparent about what they are going to do. With that though, I'll, uh, I'll just turn it over to you and maybe we can just discuss what you're doing, how long it will take and when it's going to come up.
Sure. My name is Chris Montal. I'm with Golden Tree Service. Uh, I've been doing work for EverSource Education Line Care for approximately twenty-seven years. Back then, when I started out in local, what was that, PSN H? Um, so EverSource does this to ensure the safety reliability, um, of the electricity as well as to improve, um, the reliability of the electricity services to the customers of, um, New Fields as well as many other areas in the area. Um, there, there is a spec that EverSource tried to retain that is put into place by the Public Utility Commission. Um, so what they want to do is trim fifteen feet above a primary, which on roads that have, um, distribution, of primary, it's the very top wire, um, on the top of the pole. So they want fifteen feet above, eight feet to the side, either side of the inner and the outermost face. Um, some of, some of your line, I'll just describe it briefly, have a single face. That's one single wire, um, that runs along the pole tops. Okay, three phase is three. It has three wires. Mostly you'll see a cross on, so it's like a T shape on top of the utility pole. There is, uh, a face to the outside, a face to the inside, um, and then a face that runs down the center. Um, the spec is the same for both of them, fifteen feet above, eight feet to the side, and ten feet below, which is roughly the height of the lowest wire, uh, configuration of the utility poles, which is your communication wires. Your, into that, your table, your home phone if you have it. Uh, part of the trimming, um, that a lot of people don't understand, they think we're, we're just gonna remove anything, everything. Um, and that's not the case. Anything that's rolling over those wires, if it's six inches in diameter or greater, um, and it's dead, dying, decaying, they would remove it. If it's healthy and it's, six inches or above, it stays. It's considered mature. Uh, so they, they do not remove. It just gets trimmed. Uh, as far as brush on the ground, in the past, that was something that EverSource did. Um, they do not anymore. They just want to get that ten feet below. Uh, as far as the hazard trees that are marked in town, um, I just want to make you aware that they are not commissioned yet from what Crystal we.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we really don't want to, um, approve those tonight. We want to get approval for regular trimming. Uh, the hazard trees, we don't feel that we should, you know, uh, try to get that, uh, that cleared up tonight uh, because people aren't notified as far as removing trees. Uh, so you'll probably see a lot of blue and white ribbons on trees around town. Um, they've been identified. They've been entered into EverSource's, um, program called Field Maps. All, all of EverSource and all of the tree contractors, um, they have that program as well. I, I was informed that there are some trees in the town as well, that you have requested. You folks have requested to be removed. And, and we, as long as we get, we have permission for those, when we do the hazard work, um, after we've attended the town meeting, we will be removing those. Um, so I, I won't take up any time, your time with that, because we will have a second, um. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Any question? Please.
Hi, I'm Chris Montal. I'm on Hallsdale Road.
Yes.
Um, so we have sent a form back in, uh, several months ago. What's the impact of that?
So, um, did you receive the form in the mail?
Yeah.
Okay, that form was for scheduled maintenance trimming, which is what we're here for. Uh, so that is your fifteen feet above the line and less. It's over six inch, six inches or greater. Excuse me. We don't trim it. So anything under six inches, that's healthy, stable, um, we will, we will leave it. Uh, so, you know, more than a scenic road, a lot of scenic roads and in towns that, um, that, uh, historically, um, had that nice canopy that goes over the road, um, we don't want to do that. EverSource doesn't want to remove that. That's not something we're looking for, um, as long as it's six inch, six inches diameter or greater. So it's just, it's trimmed fifteen feet up, eight feet to the side, ten feet below, um, no brush.
And it's all on the side of the power lines itself, not on the opposite side of the road?
The opposite side of the road, any growth from the opposite side that comes within, um, eight feet of the conductor.
Sure.
We would, uh, want to trim that back to that eight feet as well. And we would also, um, notify those folks with the pamphlet that you received, which it explains what's being done. Um, it gives the property, uh, an option, um, you know, to check, you know, we approve this work and they, they made signature. Or it also gives them the option to have a consultation, which would be with us for the trees, where the contractor is doing the work. It also gives them the right to refuse. Um, anything we do not receive permission for or is refused, um, we do not trim. Property owners have that right. Uh, as long as it, if it's in the town right away and we cannot get permission for it, we will then, um, come to the town to try to get the permission to trim it back. Um, you know, all, everything will be cleaned up. All the debris will be removed. Just in case you're wondering if you touched on the hazard trees, I don't want me here, you know, thinking to yourself, wow, I moved in with those. Um, when that comes, we'll remove those trees that we get permission for that we've marked. If the property owners just don't want the wood, we will remove it that day. We, I can't speak to the other tree companies. I did work for that past one for ten years. And back then, we never picked up wood because EverSource did not pay to pick it up. Um, that, those days are gone now, at least for now. It, it's figured into, um, our rates to EverSource to pick up wood while we're there. So we have a bucket truck, a chip truck, and a log truck on that side. So once it's cut down and went up, we grab it. Excuse me.
Um, if the homeowner wants you to leave the wood, can I request it?
Absolutely.
I have two hard laces and you're taking a tree out of my property.
Correct. No, no, no. I burned wood. I don't think so. Cut all those trees down right here. They're sitting right here. So, yes, um, we do.
Do you split too?
Does it look like I split? I didn't split. I'm not proud of it, but I split it. I, I shared.
So stacking's out of the question.
Excuse me?
Stacking's out of the question.
So, um, there's a few things we'll all have to do with that. Obviously, the property owner has the right to keep the wood. It's theirs. Um, we'd like to see them keep it, um, because we just give it away. So, um, not that it's not okay for someone to get it for free, um, but if, if someone's gonna get it for free, we would like to see that the people of New Fields get it, the town where, where we're moving in. We will also, we're not gonna leave anything in the, uh, drainage hitches. Um, you know, the off-road, on the other side of the ditch, um, if property owners request and they say, you know, hey, can you leave it on the other side of the stone wall? Uh, or on the other side of the fence, as long as the locker can pick it up and send it there, I do believe it. Uh, we will also, some towns like Deerfield, they have a program where, uh, property owners of the town of Deerfield, uh, will come and get wood that we leave with the town. So the towns, you know, we want to help our residents. There's some that, hey, you know, not all of us have money to buy wood and quit the heat or not, so, uh, let's help out our residents. Uh, so we started doing that two years ago. Uh, if you would like the wood, if it's not more than ten minutes away, because EverSource doesn't want to pay for us to drive. If you have a location, we don't want to be driving it over the hill.
So, New Fields is in that bit. So, um, there is a, I'm, I'm not saying this, this is the answer. We'd probably want to talk to the, to the water and sewage department and the road agent. But there is, um, we have a big stall check, uh, right down on, off our railroad avenue, uh, one minute from where we sit here.
Okay.
Um, if we were to coordinate with you, could we have you guys like drop, just, it's a big parking area. Drop it all there and you guys can take off and, and we'll have it available for review. Okay, great. Great. We'll talk about that more.
With that, so I don't forget, um, you would want to make sure, and I'm not saying it's not something you would bring up, but you want to make sure that the town is okay, um, because if, if, if residents go down and stop cutting and someone gets hurt, is it gonna be a liability around the town? So, but just make sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's probably just gonna be, uh, uh, you know, basically first come, first served, haul it off, no cutting down there.
So, the, the wood that's undesirable, you know, pine or hemlock or not, um, we, we would haul that away if you folks didn't want it. And me personally, I would want to have to deal with it there, because once it's there, if people don't want it, then it's stuck there.
Yeah, all, all the big ones are.
Yeah, well, yeah, sure, sure. But it would have to split. So, um, yeah, we can talk about that on the.
That's right.
Um, but I just wanted to, you know, to, to let the folks here know that, um, I didn't want them to walk out of here saying, oh, my word, what's the scoop of the trees coming down? So, just, just a little bit of information.
Oh, on the flip side, one question. What's the protocol for submitting a request to cut the tree down? So let's say someone sees a tree that's looking really wonky. So I, I had someone comment that off of Piscassic Road, there's this one little sweet spot that always seems to get, uh, where power lines come down. So.
If you have a request, um, I can leave you a card before I go. I work every day with Crystal.
There is a. Uh, well, we, and this, this goes to the, you know, we had, people sent us emails with specific requests and then we coordinate with Crystal to, uh, have, you know, you guys would want to come look, see if it's, it's a problem tree. So if, if anybody has an issue, they can send it to, to Sue or to us and we can coordinate, uh.
What I would do is your best bet is if you have Crystal's information, is to coordinate with her.
Yeah.
Um, and then she will coordinate with me.
I think it's just easy for the, anybody who in town who has an issue, you should come to the town. That, that way, I think you guys aren't involved by random people who you don't, you don't know and, and I think by coming through the town, it's easier for us to coordinate with them and make sure that it gets done.
And, and that process will be a little bit different than the provisioning process for S N T. Um, nothing will come in the mail. Uh, a representative from Northern, which will be, uh, myself or Nick Bronson, Dallas. Uh, and I can pronounce that because he's my brother-in-law. Uh, it'll be him or I, either him or I that would come. We would go to each property, uh, where those blue and white ribbons are. If people are wondering, you get calls by like, what are these ribbons? No one saw for us. We placed the ribbons on them before. Um, so property owners, if they contact us and they want to look at, you know, which trees, we can say the trees with the blue and white ribbon along your property. So we, we mark the trees, we measure them, the diameter, the species, and what's wrong with them. But it will be an actual representative that either goes to the door, leaves a, uh, it is a, uh, a little, uh, brochure. Um, our numbers, our main number, our company is stamped on it, uh, our emails on it. So, um, but we, it's more of an in-person than S N T trimming. So that way, if anybody has any questions, um, you know, we can talk about them. Because it, it's a lot more involved. You're taking out whole trees.
Okay.
And taking out a whole tree, you know, depending on what you take out, you know, it could be a hole, a big hole. But, uh, but, you know, right now, it's just the S N T trimming. Um, another thing is chips. If anybody has used for wood chips in the town, you don't, we will gladly dump them. Also, we can get rid of them for that. Does anybody else have any questions for me?
So with the trimming, because that, you're about to do that, how long will it take, uh, for you guys to basically complete the circuit of trimming?
All right, so it's, it's, um, based on miles of the circuit. One, a, a town may have five circuits and may have twenty, depending on how large it is. Um, this circuit, I, I don't know what the mileage is, and the reason is because probably about forty-five minutes ago, I had a call saying, hey, can you fill in for me? Uh, and I threw everything on and made my way here, so, which is no problem, whatever, it would help. Uh, if you want, I can look at the mileage on my cell phone real quick if you don't mind.
What's the mileage in town?
Well, that, that, that could change. Well, let me just look.
Sure. I mean, there's not, there's not a whole lot of mileage in this town. And even a lot of the, like deer trees, there's no poles in deer trees, right? Everything's underground in, in the development, so. I mean, it's mainly eighty-five, eighty-seven, Lee, uh, Hallsdale and Ball Hill, for the most part.
So this circuit is going to be roughly thirteen miles.
Thirteen?
Yeah, well, you gotta think some of them include side roads.
Oh, okay.
Includes single-phase paths only. So if you have one wire going down your driveway, uh, it's called triplex. It's rubber coated and it looks like a twist. So it's got two hot wires that are, uh, coated, uh, and then a bare brown wire. That we, EverSource does not trim. They only trim bare branches. So that's why you're looking fifteen miles, while it includes single-phase paths that go down driveways. Every road off, on your main roads, any developments that they have that don't have underground now, which is kind of nice if it's on eyesore and love everybody making sure their trees, uh, so that's all.
Okay. And so with thirteen miles, how long will it take?
Uh, something like that would probably.
Few weeks.
It would take probably, uh, roughly in the neighborhood of, I mean, four weeks.
Okay, great.
We would also, um, speak with the police department, assuming you might be the chief or.
Yeah.
We, we will speak with you about details, what you require, what you require, um, with sufficient notice so that you can fill it.
So, you know, we have had, for example, impacts with some contract of, from a little tree, they've been trimming.
Okay.
So I assume that's part of this project?
Um, if they're doing maintenance trimming in the town, it would be for, you know, i- if it's on the regular, EverSource lines.
Yes.
Uh, I'm not aware of that, to be honest with you. Uh, I don't know if there was, I would assume if there was more than one circuit, then there, um, it would have, we wouldn't be having this meeting. It would already be done if they're trimming on it. Um, so my question is, is there only EverSource in this town?
Only.
I think there is. There's no unitile when you get.
It, it ends at the town line and actually to Chief's point, they were trimming in front of my house. I'm one of the last houses in town before you did.
Oh, well, all right, so let me rephrase this, so I'm not making anybody, uh, wonder what's going on here. We, we don't all, we don't, we're not required by law to notify the town itself, unless it's a scenic road.
Right.
The tree company that's doing the work, they should come to the town ahead of time and talk, uh, with someone at the town hall to let them know, as well as the police department, we're going to be here, um, you know, a month from now. Um, we're gonna need details. Um, so they should be giving, uh, and Crystal can do it. It's not really her responsibility. It's the, the vegetation line companies, that's who they are. So before we come in, we will give you ample notice, okay? So this could be a circuit that Apex, um, was awarded, um, by EverSource and it has no scenic road on it.
Right.
You know, a lot of times, and I'm not saying it's right, or I'm not gonna say Northern doesn't do it sometimes, but I've seen it through many, uh, vegetation line companies, that they don't root for the town, but they should. All of us should. Uh, it's the right thing to do. So people on one road, so on, uh, so the town roads, there's gonna be tree trucks set up on these roads, you know, impeding traffic. So, um, another thing is, just before I forget, the hazard trees, if they require a crane, um, and the cranes that are deep in the road at all, uh, the town is notified, the police department is notified ahead of time because there's a lot of roads, um, that are narrow. Uh, and once the crane has its outbreak is out, that they go away and we have big cranes. Um, then we may have to shut a road down or reroute if we get the approval from the town, the police department, um, and you're out of time. So.
How, for, for an individual tree, how long would it, might a crane be blocking? Let, for example, Hallsdale Road, very narrow, I guess, is if you have to have a crane in there, you'll be blocking that road, I would suspect. How long does it, does it take for a crane to take down a tree?
So it depends on the crane and it depends on what they're taking down. Uh, I can, can tell you that, uh, we have really large cranes, meaning working distance. You know, we can set up in one spot and we can reach probably to the right and to the left, um, probably out to about a hundred and fifty feet. Um, and we can pit several trees from that one set. And keep in mind, each tree isn't always a one pit. Me, by pit, I mean one piece and the whole tree's down. You got a piece down a section for, for, you know, be able to handle it safely. Um, but it's not like all the trees, you know, cranes just die at one end and, and spending the whole day taking down, you know, trees along the whole road. It, there's just certain, there may be two, there may be three trees on the road, you know, and then they go to another road. But the crane does not get used very much.
Okay.
Uh, we do have seventy-foot buckets, um, that pretty much reach anything, so. Uh, but it's hard to say how long on any particular day, you know, they, they would take up the road. It's not, I mean, a road would not have to be closed, you know, every minute of the day as the crane picks up, um, and moves on. It, it's a process. It's not like a bucket truck where it takes a few minutes and then it, it moves. It, it's a process and a lot of stuff.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, it, it, and I'm not saying, I, I don't know what roads, I don't even know if the crane would be needed, but I just wanted to, you know, make you folks aware that it may and have to come in to town. And there would be plenty of those, so. And, you know, and there are some roads, you know, you can't get access to maybe a portion of it. Um, so, you know, if, if we had a police detail, which with the crane, we have police. Um, you know, if there was an emergency call, um, you know, I would assume if, if it's a, it's a town officer, which, you know, it's, it's not always towns. Um, because it is, you know, a lot of times it's a shortage, so you all will go to other towns. Um, but, you know, if, if there was something where we could get a call or the officer that was there, if it was something that they heard over their radio, I mean, we would, they said, hey, we would pick up on it here. So I just can't give you a timeframe. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be right for you to do that.
That's right. Other questions for the Darren Republic or Ward? Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, we appreciate it. Um, obviously, you guys will be back before we start picking trees. But for now, you know, you guys will be doing the trimming and.
Just trimming.
Right.
Yeah, and, uh, Crystal will, will send out, you know, the proper paperwork to inform the town. Once the trees, uh, identified, which I believe most of them are, but more importantly, they're commissioned. We have the approval from the property owners.
Great. Great.
I'm sorry, I don't look good?
No, it looks like you've got to go do some trimming.
I had my driveway paved today, so my truck was about a mile down the road, top of an Eversource substation, and my wife was gone, her power's away, I couldn't find her keys, and I had to get my youngest one. So, I don't have the right tie on in my pocket.
Not a problem, we appreciate it.
Alright, well, thank you very much for your time, not your time, ooh, the time, not your time, I appreciate it. Any questions, feel free to get ahold of Crystal, and she will address them.
Thank you.
Alright, Crystal, have a good night.
Alright, with that, we will close this public hearing. Alright, next up on the agenda, Free Bearings Correspondence. So, we received an email today from Free Bearings. Free Bearings is the advisor to trustees of trust fund. This basically is, it's more of an accounting issue, if you, if you guys have a chance to read through the email. In effect, when we set aside money for the one-seventy-fifth, we had two warrant articles in prior years, plus a warrant article this year. Free Bearings is basically clarifying, in terms of the process, how the money should go, basically, to the trustees of the trust fund, and then, once the trustees of the trust fund receive the funds, they'll release those monies into the operating budget, so that we can formally spend it. It's more of a process clarification, just to make sure that we are going through the proper steps from an accounting standpoint. But I don't know if you guys have any questions about the Free Bearings?
No.
Again, clarification from them, and I think Sue and I are on making the moves, because they're, they're going to be spending money for the one-seventy-fifth. Alright, with that, I'll leave that one item. Next up, we have the MS-232. So we are required by state law to provide the MS-232, which is due shortly after our annual meeting. This basically outlines appropriations for the town. You guys have that in front of you. These are the, basically, the budget numbers that were approved in our budget, and we provided to the state, and then the lawyers approved at the March election. So, take a quick look. These are all the expected appropriations for this year. Any questions or comments about the 232?
No. Just out of ignorance, what is the capital wildlife land?
That is, that is the planned acquisition of our property.
Oh, it is?
Yep.
So, and that's worst-case scenario, what are?
That's, that is the amount that was approved on a warrant.
Okay.
So, if you'll notice, so, for example, if you go to the next page, under two capital reserve funds, you see fifty-two thousand dollars. That would be the fifty thousand that was approved for the fire chart, plus two thousand dollars approved for the equipment in the warrant.
Yeah.
Now, this is all basically the expect, expected expenditures for the upcoming year, based upon our operating budget and the warrants that were passed.
Okay, so, but according to them, they're saying we're strictly on the, just the two million, so.
No, the warrant article, uh, no, 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 they, okay, so understand what the warrant article stated. The warrant article stated that we would be spending up to three-point-seven million, which is what this reflects.
Okay.
This isn't the source of funds, right, in terms of the borrowings, or the grants, or any other contributions. This is the approved expenditures of money for the town.
Okay.
So, you know, this basically says that we're not going to spend more than the six million dollars bottom-line number. And so that's what we're held to. If some of this doesn't get spent, it doesn't get spent.
Which is a good thing.
But, you know, this basically says we can spend up to this amount of money.
Okay.
And these are the expected categories that we'll be spending. And we have to file this with the state, so, you know, they're, they'll hold us to this as we get towards the end of the year. Okay, alright. Any other questions about the MS-232? No? I'll make a motion that we approve and sign the MS-232 to send to the state.
Second.
Second by vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, 232. Before we get into wherever you expense prior meeting minutes, oh, we do prior meeting, we had the three-eleven minutes, right? We don't have the four-two minutes. So the four-two minutes, Keisha will send those around, and we'll address those at the next meeting. So prior meeting minutes that we received at the last meeting, do you guys have any edits or changes from the, from the draft that we received, if you've had a chance to review?
Can you prepare that for me?
Yes, I can.
I'm good.
Okay, no, no change? Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the March eleventh, select board meeting as amended.
Second.
Second by vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Before we get into that, I see that Lynn is here, so Lynn, Lynn Dorr sent an email, briefly mentioned it at the last meeting, because it came in totally before the meeting. Appreciate you coming in, Lynn, do you want to just say anything about it?
So, yeah, we try to be thorough, all of the things that we've seen a lot. I guess I'd love to get your feedback in regards to, I have a lot of questions in there too. Kind of hit two different topics. One, my parents are burned, um, we're butters, so it affects us. And secondary, we were talking actually about our family, maybe, we work on the agenda. We never addressed it, and we feel this, we're waiting for the right time to do so, we were just noticing that there's some unbiased within certain board members. We feel there's a bias within certain board members. That, I just think that they just, if people are going to serve the town, I just think we need to do it in a light.
Appreciate that. You guys have had a chance to look at the email and the concern phrase, do you have any, any comments?
Yeah, so, what, my thought is, I'd like to make sure we remedy this.
Yeah.
That would be the ideal, right? And so, just not to belabor it with the story, but I grew up in New York, I had a guy that lived next door to me, he was a plumber, he had six box trucks coming in and out of the driveway. And I had a two-year-old in the crib, right by the window, and I'm like, for God's sakes, what should I do with this, right? And what I did was I went and talked to him, I said, listen, I have a baby here, would you mind shutting the trucks, the beeper off on the trucks? No problem, Mark. Okay, that's good, I might be putting a fence up. You know what, that's a great idea, I think I'll, I'll help you with it, I'll pull up the hinges, fantastic. And between us two neighbors, we, we had a very amicable relationship over ten years. So, I would like to figure out a way to have everyone taken care of, right? You had brought up a valid point about police cars being parked, I think.
Which we, we actually are okay with it, they're going to serve alcohol. We do share the same safety concerns in town, we would want a police car.
Well, the car could park on the Vernon's property, I mean, that's the idea, that if maybe it's, I don't, I don't want to make a decision or anything like that, but I'm just making a suggestion, yeah.
We did, so I do feel like Vernon's and our family are amicable. We have nothing against the Vernon's, we actually asked them to sit down, so we can discuss our concerns with them last call.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, they just kept telling us that the town will allow us to do this, which we have a really hard time, considering, like, for example, we have a conservation company come to our property once a year, and, you know, they commented a pile of rocks that was there prior to us even moving the property, but yet somehow Vernon's can move a rock wall that's a store, a conservation land, a conservation deed, to move a driveway so they can pull the fence in a non-commercial zone. I just don't understand how, we're questioned about rocks that we didn't put there, and yet they're not getting help with these dangers.
Yeah.
And I, you know, honestly, I would a hundred percent support them if they were, for example, if they brought the fire and spikes, you know, and held their fence there. We, my husband and I would be the first ones there to support them. It's just, I just think they're acting a little bit too much from, not only us as neighbors, but the Scat's Road is not a road where we should have that much traffic coming in and out. I have a blind driveway, it's hard for my kids to pull in and out of. You can't see it over that hill, that's exactly where they live. To have that many cars coming towards our driveways, it's, it's concerning to us, especially if they're serving alcohol as well. And that's what they've been touching upon, amplification, sixty-five deciles of amplification moved, you know, it's not controlled. Jeremiah said he'd be willing to come over and check the meter, but he too admitted himself that it's hard to control amplification, so I just don't understand.
So, a thought is, just, I mean, could we ask them to move the direction of the speakers, right?
They got it in the direction, though, they had it pointed towards that conservation land, and that would be affected for what they want.
Yeah, but at least they're not pointing it into the street, I mean, again, I can't make those decisions.
Yeah, it's pointed directly towards us, but our other neighbors too, it's actually a loud running side. It's a fence by the windows, you just, you know, unfortunately, you can't control that. And it's just, it's not like a tractor, a lawnmower, you buy our house, we expect these things looking out of harm, but we don't expect the big trouble in our family room when we're trying to have them.
So what would be, what would be a good solution, then?
They find, they find a commercial zone area that will never move. That's the only way we can be happy with the situation, not to mention our property value. If we were ever to sell our house, somebody's going to say, what's going on here, Friday and Saturday night? What does that do with the property that we've put a lot of time and energy into? And I understand they have a business, I just think they have to see that there's roadblocks to their property, and I think that they need to look at their neighbors. I know personally, when we moved, the real estate agent, Glad, told us, like, because I said, wow, this would be a view of a wedding in our home. And she, she's flat outside of the town with town comments, because of the library doors, closed, fire just moved into our house.
They said you couldn't?
Yeah, and she says it's, you're not, it's owned in a commercial area, you shouldn't be moving these types of events, the road is not, it's not, the road is built for that. You go, you know, you go to, you know, there's, there's traffic lights, there's stop signs, you don't have that there. It's just not the right place to be moving the fence. And like I said, I, I grow the farm, I, I support farmers, just not in this time, and I think they're going to sell their produce from their farm, they can grow on the farm, and they should be moving the fence. And like I said, my husband and I would be the only people who need to do that, we have nothing against that, it's just it's really repeating our lives, and I do think, like, if we're where we are in the Scat's Road, it doesn't really happen. You guys have a great job, so we have that. But it takes like six months, like, that alone should tell you, you know, maybe we need to, maybe find a place. I appreciate you, with the fact, I mean, we would.
Yeah, it's a, it's a quandary, because you have, they're there, and chances are they're going to say, oh, we're not going to move. So, then.
Well, how can I answer your question too, so, I know.
And that's not me saying it, I'm just, I'm kind of putting it in the middle of saying, alright, here's this problem, and what do we do to remedy it, at least somehow for the time being?
My solution is okay, so, they are allowing good, like, town's law, and parking vehicles, spreading oil, plant, and property conservation land. We have twelve acres of non-conservation land, we wouldn't have, have you guys be a part of, so we can just start doing whatever we want to do. So, say they continue, we continue, who's to say that everybody in a farm on the Scat's Road just doesn't start doing this? And then the town has even more of an issue with the traffic and whatnot. I just, I, I don't understand how they're allowed to park all those cars on a conservation land. I know personally, like, my, I, I have, my parents grew up with two acres, and if ever comes out of the family, I know they would not want, they want to make it a conservation, they would want it to remain in conservation, not to utilize in a manner that should be done on a commercial土地.
Okay, you have a question, statement?
Thank you for coming in and having your say, and as you were saying that, I wish that you'd say that to the planning board too.
I would have.
But then, also, the whole process by which the Vernon's, and other facilities are approved for activities is through our planning board, and the ordinances that we have in our book, and it's possible that we need to change some of those ordinances. I'm in a position where I often see a few words that need to change, and I come in and we talk about it. I think that's where the process should go, to possibly make some changes, but I was kind of aware of the approval process that the Vernon's went through.
Which, another thing too, and I could be wrong, we're living a very busy lifestyle, we don't have a good call getting the first, the site plan information that was certified in there. We got the one that was sent to us after they built the kitchen that was too close to the road. So we got that one, but we don't have a good call getting one, we would have gone to.
The original list? I, I was at the office just a moment ago, and I'm not on the planning.
But that's another thing, is like, I just, that's where we're kind of like, you know, it, it used to be like.
There were no site plans submitted, this was one of the issues, I think, that, that first brought this before the planning board, which was, there was a, there was a request for a building permit for a deck for the refrigerators.
Or before that, Michael, that was the Farm Store.
Oh, correct, then, then, then they went through the Farm Store process, that was done at the planning board though.
Yeah.
With, with specifics about, about the parking and traffic, hours of operation.
Changes.
They went, that went all through the planning board, in terms of the Farm scan.
Yeah.
Then, there was a request made of the building inspector to approve a deck for, for the refrigerator units. That was changed at some point to allow a roof over that for refrigerator units for storage of produce. When it was, the planning board was informed that in fact that facility was actually being used to serve the general public, that's when the planning board said, wait a minute, we need to take a closer look at this, because there was no site plan submitted, even though it now, we're now being with the general public use, no inspection about electrical, no inspection about construction, now that the public was actually going to be on, in and on the building, right, because there are building code standards for structures. And so that's kind of what kicked off the whole thing last year before the planning board, and, you know, the idea was to move the notice of decision, allow them time to resolve a lot of the outstanding issues that were not addressed when they constructed and started to operate, that should have been addressed prior to the construction of that facility. That's where we stand right now.
So does the town, okay, would that keep doing the best?
Well, we, we, what we have to do is, the, the deadlines on that notice of decision are coming up in May, and I presume that the planning board and/or this select board will have to do basically a review to make sure that there is compliance with what they agreed to. So, this is a process, you know, that everybody agreed to in that notice, that is coming up.
So if they just, so if they check all the boxes?
And those boxes are things like noise, number of events, it's, you know, the building inspector did a review of their facility, they need to do upgrades and issues to deal with that. They were required to, you know, get the driveway permit, there's a slew of items in that notice of decision, and that's publicly available if you want, if anybody wants to go look at it. So it's, you know, that's, like I said, that's, I think it's sometime in May, that that's basically coming up, and so. basically coming up, and so there'll be some review of that by the town, one of the town boards. Okay? All right?
Lynn, did you want to talk about this all this week?
I, well, we touched upon it a little bit in regards to, well, I can give a quick review of the.
See, you have. This is Selt, this is beginning with the greenway.
Yeah, so we've been doing a southeast land trust, we have an event after our ride to get back to Scotts' Greenway.
Oh.
We've been using the temporary event for the last five years. We, we really tried to work hard with them, so through the first year, they had, they built the bridge back about a mile back from our house. They said it was a one-time thing with the usage, it was every other day, three cars a day. We were, we were very patient with it, because, you know, we appreciate what they do out there, and we ourselves, we utilized the bridge, so we were fine with it, but then it continued again the following year, and we asked them, it was becoming, you know, I was on river around on four roots, and my daughter on courses, we really need to know.
Of course, coming through your property?
Yes, three quarters.
Literally between the garage and their home?
Yes.
Is the access?
It's invasive, and so we just nicely asked them if they could give us an application prior to them coming, so we can, my daughter's on a course, we should make sure that's over there, and make sure all the vehicles are out of the way, you know, so we're trying to accommodate them too, as well. We actually removed trees from the driveway that we don't even use, you know, trying to be, like we said earlier, trying to work with them, right? So that works for everybody.
Yeah.
And they just said they didn't have to, and their exact word in email was saying, we will tell you when we see fit.
That's harsh.
Yeah, it's just harsh, because we did not do anything to firm that statement whatsoever. My deception that could both southeast land trust, Brian, and my husband and I, kind of mediate something that could work for both of us, and I, I did get the impression that they were willing to work with us.
Well, I think they, I, I think they said, oh yeah, we'll try to figure this out, but it's been two years?
Yeah.
And I, I'm just astounded myself, I'm astounded that they refused to provide twenty-four hours notice. To me, it is a, I, I think a very reasonable request, that in this day and age, with immediate communication, cell phones, emails, that it, it, to me, it is stunning to me that, that they don't accede to that.
What's, what's the reason for going back and forth on the property? I mean.
So first, it was the bridge that we need to build back there, and then the second year, they said that they needed to repave some trails, so there was a rash trail, and then I think they, one other trail that they were working on as well.
And there's no other route, there's no other way that they can act on that?
Well, we tried that.
Yeah, so, well, two things, when they were building the bridge, we were very patient, we didn't mean any question, but they didn't have a way, like, they couldn't have bought a loan for our property, and that daily traffic or interference on. And unfortunately, even though they were going to turn from, they weren't always respectful. One guy who has German Shepherd hanging out the window barking at our dog, just, you know, my husband tried to work his office within ten feet of the driveway, yelling at our workers that are on our lawn to get the truck out of the way, but how can we do that? We didn't know they were coming, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the driveway on our lawn, right, was just completely disrespectful. So the next year, we weren't quite as patient, and they said they were gonna come back. You know, we were just like, we're gonna be better people, we're gonna allow people to do this, and, you know, they said it was a one-time thing, but then unfortunately, the next year, they continued to utilize it the same way and the same manner. So that's when we really started getting communication back and forth to the street to get something to work out. We actually offered to put our available lot into conservation, and make sure that they give us twenty-four hour notification, we had the way to survey, and we kind of met up halfway. They were gonna build a driveway and work with us on the right side of the, the conservation land, looking for that available lot into conservation. They were all set to do it, and this is where my husband and I got extremely offended at this point of the conservation committee, because they did come out, they looked at the, the new driveway that was coming that we paid to survey, because southeast land trust had told us that they would be willing to give us twenty-four hour notification. We would have never even taken the first step had they not told us that.
Right.
We got all the way down to the end of negotiations between, like, a barrier with the driveway, financially, everything was all set, and they said, but we cannot give you twenty-four hour notification. So we pulled it, we said, you know, we, we're not.
I think it's fair enough.
We probably were extremely jealous.
It's like a lot of verification this.
Yeah, we thought we were being extremely jealous for something we shouldn't have, we should be giving the inspector. Like, we researched land trust, we talked to a lot of people, land trusts are supposed to work with homeowners, they're, they're not a particular intent to work with us at all. So when we pulled the, uh, the lot off the cards, they, they, their mannerisms got worse. But what I was upset about the conservation committee is they never followed up with the issue, and then they took it upon themselves to not put us on the agenda, and then talk to us, talk about us and our family in regards to the situation, with us not present, we just haven't had a front, it was surprising for the committee, meaning that Sharon had followed us. But they did so, but Mike Hessler had just stepped in, interim, and he didn't know anything about the situation, so he couldn't even defend us in this situation, but I just feel if a committee is going to talk about somebody without their presence, we should have been known that we were already on the agenda, we're on the agenda.
Sure.
And they should have come to us first and followed back up with us, and, and listened to what had, you know, inspired since the last time we talked with them. So I, I do feel that they failed in that manner, and I'm very, very disappointed in the fact that we were talking fully about, without having the information.
One of the things that resulted from that, and that was one of the incentives, my heart to push, at all-time meetings, be recorded and archived, because there were some things said that told me the problem, and people will say things when they think they're in close to, or typing on their keyboard, and they don't have to look somebody in the audience and say that. So that's why we pushed the last word, in the last year, we allocated funds to ensure all planning boards, select board, Tom, Tom, ZBA meetings will be recorded, will be visible, and kind of put the spotlight on recruit, or at least assisted recruiting, for the occurrence of that type of.
I think that's great, unfortunate that you would come to do that, you people.
I think it's fair enough to say, to be accusing, calling names, all of that, I mean, that's, you can, you can have a civil discussion, and I mean, that to me seems fair enough. I don't, I don't understand why there would be some pushback on something like that, especially if you have kids in the yard, so.
Yeah, it's, it's never lost, it's been, it's been really stressful.
Well, what can we do then? What can, what can we do to remedy that part of it?
Unfortunately, they tried to utilize the driveway this past fall, we, we tried to go through mediation with them.
Mediation.
Tried to go through mediation with them, but their lawyer, but I'll say, if they are working mediation for twenty-four hour notification, we're not asking for a lot, we're asking for twenty-four hour notification.
Yeah.
Then it's off the table, we won't go, that's how, they've been very, like, unreasonable. So, we're working with lawyers, they showed up one day at our house, the police were aware of it, so, we had just paved that portion of the driveway, which we, when we first purchased the house, there was a run off, a big ditch on the driveway, they needed to do not use this driveway. And the first day we moved the house, we had somebody, I'm literally feeling the moving trucks, and this guy comes and tells us that we need to fix the ditch because of the runoff roof. So they never once, first of all, that's completely disrespectful, but if we continue it on, they never once offered to help maintain this driveway, that we don't use, that they use, we've been maintaining it this whole time, under the cap. We ended up having to pave that portion of the driveway after, we had Kinnipstein fix it once, we had extra landscapingsters fix it again, and then we just realized that the only solution here is to pave it. So we had to pave, two days later, they show up unannounced, and I send them away, and as they couldn't come onto the driveway, that's when she came down on public station, and, and they ended up taking the support over it. So we're still dealing with lawyers.
So it's currently still in court?
Still in court.
And it just, so you know, our, the town is not a party to it, but we are an intermediary in the case, you know, notified about anything that occurs in the case, given that the conservation commission and the town as, as a whole has interests in this issue, obviously. So, but that's just, just to let you know where it's. There's gotta be a, there's gotta be a, I mean, really, there's gotta be a solution that is easier.
So we came up with a solution, we came up with a solution that we presented to them, and we actually presented it, so this is one for.
Or easy.
And then they own the farm, they own the whole farm property of the Volco Road. At first, they said we can't log in trucks, and we checked Kinnipstein, and that was the fault, you can't have logging trucks. So then I actually had a lawyer go through the cold form deed, and it states that town based land trust can build a driveway for logging purposes, like, so allowing them to do that, so there's no restrictions in the deed that would not allow them to be able to build the driveway into the Scotts' Greenway. The conservation committee had its concerns, which I get, I understand, maybe disruptive nature.
Yeah.
And it is, from the Volco Road all the way to the Greenway, it is about double, I walked it, it's about double delay to the farm access. But to us, we were trying to tell them, okay, this is the thing, we have two acres of a lot, and we're two, anyway that uses the Greenway is not gonna allow us to build back there. You're gonna have electrical lines going over the Rockhampton rail trail, the snowfield committee, you, this club, uses our access to get to the Greenway, and then to get to the rail trail. Now it's gonna get filed if somebody's back there, they're not gonna be able to cross anymore, so it would cause a lot of friction, and not that long, you have two acres that is, could be in conservation, now you're gonna reach field, wow, all that stuff back there, right? So I was trying to make the conservation committee understand, it's not like we're just asking you to move, we are gonna give this up, we'll put it in conservation, we actually offered to help find the, the road over there as well. They, they are even trying to even.
And why, and what was the reason for saying no?
I would love, if you'd tell me why, because my husband and I are pointing our pair out to try to find out why southeast land trust would not even consider.
You're gonna give them a piece of land to accommodate another right of way, in other words, right?
Yeah.
Is it, I mean, is anyone here have any knowledge of this?
Lynn, what's the value of that lot, the price there?
We got offered two hundred fifty thousand.
So you're gonna give a three hundred fifty thousand dollar lot to Greenway, you were gonna pay for the road, coming in off of Ball Hill?
We were gonna totally agree with them.
Where you're split.
We were gonna work with them, try to help find it, and we were gonna put the portion it would cost us to fill our, yes, yes.
So in other words, you're gonna donate probably coming up on a half million dollars in expenses.
And was there, was there pushback because of environmental issues with that, or?
Which, yeah, perhaps some of the conservation committee members did, I don't think pushback, but I, I understand their concerns, it's destructive nature, right? So I think they're, they're doing their homework, making sure that it wasn't too invasive, but as we've said, building a house, man, right now, that's pretty much within conservation land, I would think would be more invasive than, than doing a covert.
Or a little trade.
And let's, let's address how often that road would be used, the logging is every twelve to fifteen years, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
And so they would probably be used by heavy equipment every twelve to fifteen years, and then maybe trucks coming through to take equipment in. So it isn't like it's gonna be eighty-seven or Ball Hill Road.
No, and in turn, you guys will not have a town owner has to worry about cars going over the Rockhampton rail trail.
Rail trail.
This is the basis.
Right. Well, I got one too, and, 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 again, looking for solutions.
Yeah.
One of the things I have done is I've reached out to New Hampshire Rail Trails, you know, we, we're talking with the conservation commission in the last meeting, and we talked about the Beaver Dam issue, and as it turns out, they were having equipment down the rail trail to deal with beavers.
We saw it.
If, if, and the, the question that, you know, the Wales Trails is going to be, they're looking to schedule a meeting here to talk about the Beaver Dam issue, how will on a go-forward basis, will address it, that, you know, takes into account the safety issues, the neighbor issues, conservation issues, and, and so that's coming up towards, you know, they're looking for dates towards the end of April, early May. But one of the things in my conversations with them about the beavers is, can we actually then use a lot, if they're taking heavy trucks down the rail trail, can we have them, instead of having Selt come through their property, is actually on a, you know, not so often basis, have them actually just come down the rail trail and turn into the conservation property, as opposed to coming across your property directly?
So we asked southeast land trust, we said we put our land in conservation, we helped build, because they would still have to utilize it as a conservation to get, you know.
Onto the Sats, yeah.
But they wouldn't be coming through our property anymore, which is, my husband and I, we don't need twenty-four hour notification, because it's really just, you know, our kids are doing all their activities on our property. Once they go into the Rockhampton rail trail, you know, they don't want to utilize it as theirs, if you know it's conservation land that we own. And they said that their exact words were, well, we would have to get a key, so.
Have to get a key?
Yeah, so, so they are willing to call us, help them give us twenty-four hour notification, and they're not, they're not willing to go get a key.
And then there's the other safety issue, what we knew to do with logging, the truck here is bring a logging truck coming off of Scotts', and making that night return.
Well, clearly, clearly accessing it at the rail trail is probably a lot safer than accessing at the corner, so.
Yeah, so we have, we, trust me, when we say we tried everything to work with southeast land trust, we have.
We've been looking for solutions to this.
And that's why it's so disappointing for us to hear that the conservation committee spoke so negatively about us when we weren't present, because we really have tried to be good members of the community and really work with southeast land trust, because we know a lot of people in this community do use the Sats' Greenway, and we do appreciate southeast land trust maintaining it, it's just we would appreciate a little bit more respect on their end to just let us know when they're coming.
Yeah.
So we can get our kids out of the way, kind of force them to come to the game.
All right, any other questions or comments at this point in time? Lynn, thank you very much, thank you for the email, thank you for talking to us about this today, and hopefully it's helpful for you to kind of get your today. Yeah, I mean, if I could be of some help, I mean, I don't know when the next meeting is.
You're more than welcome, our property, and to, you know, understand our, you know, our distance from the market, how it affects us as well as what southeast land trust is currently using, if you want to get a better idea of our concern.
One of the other things that you do, you had represented previously, you said, well, the roads have had large events, you've had people coming.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, or in the evening, if you're probably in Ball Hill.
Yeah, we were actually all eating dinner at the dining table, we tried, we, you know, everybody's busy, you know, wipes out, that's a frustrating thing, the events are held on times when we actually get to spend time as a family, and we're eating dinner in our dining room, and I, my husband, I'm like, who's talking about our guy, right? And, yeah, the guy was very disrespectful, but, yeah, it just, you know, it opens the door to, especially if you're serving alcohol, it's a different type of environment over there. I'm not against, I mean, I enjoy lots of wine, I like, it's just, I don't appreciate all of that being next door, and it's not a restaurant, so, well, I can get, or after this, it's a restaurant, but not in the business area, where you normally see a restaurant.
The quandary is, I believe, is that they're entitled to do certain things, they're entitled to have, to serve a meal, to play music, that kind of stuff, and, and.
Which we enjoy when it was just, you know, acoustic music in the background, and everyone's vibing, we actually do enjoy ourselves.
So just like the land trust, where they're saying, we're, we're within our rights to do this, right? Yes, you can hold that tight line, or there could be a little bit of give, right? So I wonder if there is a way to have some kind of mediation to make things a little better with the Vernons, make things better with the, with the land trust? I think having a mediator, a third party, and, and someone that's, you know, lack of a better term, unbiased, to facilitate that, to say, okay, you said this, you said this, it's all documented, what, who, who's willing to give here, right? I think that is fair enough, and maybe I'm being naive. Well, I, I, I think with respect to the land trust, though, that is, that's currently in court.
Yeah, you actually, Mike did do a great job trying to mediate that for us before we got lawyers involved.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, as, as a town body, I would hesitate to get in the middle of this now that it is in court. I, I, I think that, to your point, I think the town, for the most part, attempted to do just that on a variety of levels, looking at the twenty-four hour notice, looking at alternative routes, you know, trying to address both the concerns of Selt, as well as the concern of the landowner. I think unfortunately, there was no resolution of that, and now that it is in court, I would be hesitant for this town to now try to step in.
I would encourage that.
Because I think that would create more legal problems, maybe for us as well. Yeah, but, but your, your point is? And, but, like, but your, your point is, is, is not an invalid one, I just think that we attempted to go down that route on, on, on multiple levels and more deal with how it was resolved.
We would appreciate the town's support, if, if South East Land Trust was willing to work with us on all of those options. You know, we would appreciate the town's support, if they were willing to look into the coal farm, these hints, and, and look into a driveway going through the Greenway that way. We would appreciate the Conservation Committee's support of that. At this point, I don't know where it's gonna go, it's kind of in South East Land Trust hands.
Lynn, where are you in the legal process as far as court, what phase of the process?
Our lawyer is still hoping that they'd be willing to do mediation. Since the last time we requested mediation for 24-hour notification, she lawyers, and a lawyer feels that she's reasonable, and is hopeful that maybe they would consider the notification, so that's where we stand, we just, yeah.
If you go through discovery and everything, and all that, that...
Yeah, so, yeah, we just need our final to be back, and we can answer all, so it's come back, we're looking for time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Lynn, appreciate it. All right, other items that we need to address, so, let's see, oh, while we're on this, you want to talk about Partikian in your response?
Yes, so Mr. Partikian, you said he was given first, with numerous errors in which we've looked at. It was a compilation of continuing errors and assumptions that you had addressed previously in your response. And what I have done, and the copy of the documents that I gave you, over the past week, I put together a chronology of the issues dealing with signage issues, which is the specific focus of Mr. Partikian's lines.
And I'm sorry, this is the version of data people like?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, yeah.
And I went back to when this all started, this started in 21 April of 2015, signage issues started for the Vernon Farm. And throughout the process, on these three pages of documents that's gone to 5 April of this year, the reference of all the key points of the notices and the issues in the attempts by the town in the past nine years to basically solve this problem. And I referenced those, and this is Mr. Partikian, if you would do a deep dive on the facts as they exist, you would see that your conclusions, your allegations, such as the Select Board's figures enforcement of sign orderments has left the Vernon Family Farm store without any signage, indicated there was a store in the property for the past fall and winter, which is totally false. They could have put a sign up, implied the town's sign orderments, and they could have had a sign up. So these are the kind of things that have been passed around and caused some stress and some angst and some animosity throughout the town. When if you observe the facts and read the facts and study what is strange in this area for the past nine years, you will see that this, there's a lot of misrepresentation and false information that's been provided. So if you go through and you look at this, basically that's associated with the position of the town through the years, and it's just as men with Mr. Partikian in this email, or in this response.
It's, I mean, personally, I think, I feel like I'm in the toilet, so. When I see that it's, that it's going round and round over something, that it, it seems like it shouldn't be so difficult. I'm wondering if...
Well, I understand something, roll along, let's say.
When, when, what kind of communication is being done with the planning board? Is the planning board corresponding with them still, or?
The point I want to raise here is, this letter and the information here is not going to the Vernons, that that's not the issue that I think you're, that you're addressing. This is addressing the complaints raised by Mr. Partikian.
Right.
And the claims that this board is not acting properly.
Okay, okay.
And, and so, so I, I, I just want to make sure that we were on the same ground here. We're, we're not, I, I, again, I think, to some extent, the Vernons communicated this week about addressing this, and I, and I think it sounds like they're moving forward to comply, which is great.
They are complying, yeah.
Which is great, I think the, the issue that Hoby is raising though is a response to, and, and again, it has been raised on numerous occasions about if, if somebody wants to file a complaint with this board, the board will receive that complaint? Will investigate that complaint and respond to that complaint? And I, and I think that's what Hoby is getting at, is we've had a series of, of basically complaints from Mr. Partikian about this. I, I think that this board has acted responsibly in addressing them every single time. And I think that what Hoby has done here is really compiled a history of this to show what has been done and why the board has responded the way it asked.
Right.
So I, I just, I, I raise that only just so that we don't confuse the issue with the Vernons, because I, again, I think, I think that if...
You're responding saying that it's, you're not acting with impropriety.
Correct, correct, I, that's definitely what the gist of this response is.
Okay, okay.
So, fine, okay. Well, do you have any questions or comments about the response of Mr. Partikian?
I think, you know, some of these, some of these letters that get sent out, I think should be, in a sense, should be looked at strictly as a, as a point of, okay, let's, let's be done with this somehow, right? I don't just, I, I think, I think it just seems like there's this fire and back and forth, and, and not, and the biggest thing is for the protection of the town, that if we're spending for thirty, forty thousand dollars or so, I don't know what that number is, on legal fees, let's be done with that.
But understand, the response to Mr. Partikian, for the most part, that's, that has been done by, on the legal side. I think Hoby's been carrying the water for most of this response, I've done a little bit as well. This is more than a response to a citizen in town who has raised questions about the enforcement of the sign orderments. And these responses have been, here's what we've done, here's what we've looked at, here's what we've communicated to other people with signs in town that you raised complaints about, here's how they addressed it. I, I think, for the most part, we've, we've been responsive, but we keep getting complaints that we are not being responsive.
One of the other points I want to raise with this, we have been hit with numerous allegations of a lack of transparency on the part of the board. And that we are hiding things, and we are not dealing in a forthright, straight-up, public manner. And that was one of the points I made in this letter, Mr. Partikian.
Yeah.
Because that is one of his continuous themes that he runs through in the other 12 pages of emails, that he says that there is inequable treatment here. And when I collated these three pages of events, it's very clear that, one, it's in the agenda, two, it's in the minutes, three, it's recorded in the Select Board meeting, and it's archived, and the facts speak otherwise, but we're still getting hit with these insinuations. So my point in collating all this information, these three pages here, was to go, no, here's what the facts are, here's what we've done.
I got you, yeah. So, I, again, I, and I understand that, and so you need to answer it. I would like to figure out a way to stop employing lawyers for this back and forth.
Well, that's a separate issue.
Yeah.
That's a separate issue.
There's no lawyers engaged in this.
This is just responding to Mr. Partikian, putting nine years of facts out and saying, here are the facts. Your allegations of improper authority on the part of the board, your allegations of lack of transparency on the part of the board, your allegations of, in effect, are unfair and enforceable, are simply specious. And, and I'm not gonna sit here and accept those kind of allegations and basically almost slanderous behavior and lifeless behavior.
But understand, this is not, this is not something that we're engaging town council on.
No, no.
This is, this has been the board basically justifying and, and, again, I think, I hope he did an excellent job detailing, going back, I don't know, fifteen ye, uh, ten, nine years, as to these issues as they came up and documenting it. This is not legal costs for the town, this is a, this is the board responding to a citizens, a citizen in town who has made questions and allegations, and we're responding to it. This is not the legal issues or enforcement ordinances directly to a, a third party. So, again, I just want to make sure that we're clear about that, so that you understand, we're not talking about spending legal funds on this.
Yeah.
Turn me good with it.
I'll, I'll make a motion for, for you to send, to send this to Mr. Partikian on behalf of the board.
I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Responding back?
Yeah, great.
What I would do is I would set up a suit, get it set up, and then when we, just want to go ahead and sign it and send it?
Yep, yep, I think you can sign it and send it on behalf of the board, that would be great.
And then what I'll also do is have the chronology, the three pages of chronology include...
Oh, yeah, include that, yeah, yeah.
And documents, so that will preprove that could be an issue.
Yep, that's perfect, great, yes.
Are those documents filed, or is that the start?
Oh, no, it's all public, everything is public.
Yeah, yeah. Available in the town hall.
Yep.
In the, in the Vernon Farm file. And I, what I did is I collated and took the highlights from these three pages of all these events, I mean, the emails, all kinds of ancillary emails that are not relevant per se, they're just acknowledging receipt, say, of this complaint, and Roger, I received it and will address it the next meeting or whatever, so. This notebook right here is the full correspondence on the site, and this, three pages, is the summation of this full notebook and the site, of the correspondence. And that's all I'll work.
Okay, thanks, no problem. Okay, so that's taken care of, as our Partikian, okay, appointments. So we got the list of appointments, last meeting, hopefully you've had a chance to review those. So there's a variety of appointments, we'll work through them. A lot of signings to do here. First one I have, so I have Sean McGowan, Sean McGowan is recommended by the planning board to fill a vacancy as a planning board alternate. Any questions about that affect?
No.
No?
No.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment for Sean McGowan as a planning board alternate.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Exciting to use as they come through. Next one, also planning board, Jamie Thompson is recommended as an appointment to position on the planning board. Jamie has served as an alternate on the planning board for many years, he's also a former Select Board member. Any questions, concerns about Jamie Thompson's appointment to a full position on the planning board?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve Jamie Thompson for a planning board.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up, Bobby Kelly for Newfield Health Officer. Bobby has been our health officer now for a half dozen years or so, and he's, does a very good job of that. Any questions about Bobby Kelly serving as Newfield's Health Officer?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, Emergency Management, there's a vacancy for Deputy Emergency Management Director. The nomination is for Jeff Beanstruck to fill that position. Jeff has been a longtime participant in, in the emergency management here in town, also serves as one of our volunteer firefighters. Has been very active in town on emergency management, first responder issues. Any questions about Jeff Beanstruck for this position?
I sure don't have this, no.
I'll make a motion to approve Jeff Beanstruck for Deputy Emergency Management Director.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next question for you.
Next one.
Yeah.
What's top cover, sir? Because he's the...
The top of my head, I don't know. It's probably, it's in the front page of the town report, so you can, yeah, I, I would guess, thank you, thank you, Mark. Next up, oh, another planning board, I must have misaligned these. So Michael Price, who currently is serving as Chairman of the Planning Board, is, he's up this year for re-nomination. He's served on the planning board for countless years at this point in time. Any questions about Michael Price's position, full position on the planning board? I'll make a motion to approve Michael Price for the planning board.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is Kent Lawrence, for zoning board. Kent, you want to say anything before we...
Debate this?
Put you away for another set of years?
Give me your best shot.
Kent has served as Chairman of the Zoning Board, Kent, how long have you served on zoning?
I think I started in 1990.
Okay. Thirty, going on 35 years, Kent.
I only looked at, it was a year or so.
Kudos to you, kudos to you. So Kent, again, as Chairman on zoning, has extended some experience on zoning, and I'll, I'll make him, you guys have any questions about? I'll make a motion to approve Kent's, another term on zoning. Second by Hoby, all in favor?
Aye.
The fact that he's willing to tolerate his meetings is a testament to...
Yeah, you know, you got, you know, seeing your face, you might have been behind the camera on the other side of this universe.
Next up, there's a vacancy for zoning board alternate, Scott Sakowski, who I think you're recommending, correct?
Yes, because I don't have somebody else to fill the...
Always good to have people serve.
He hasn't been participating unless absolutely necessary.
Sure.
He has some qualifications, and I would love a little more participation, but...
How many alternates do you have on the zoning board?
Two.
Two? Oh, I guess we have both, both of them up for this.
Scott's already up first.
Scott Sakowski is up, and we're about to do Catherine Turnhousk as well.
Do, eh?
Yep.
She does double job like I do.
That's not just her case, she's for disapproval. Anyway, any questions about Scott Sakowski for the alt, excuse me, the position of alternate to the zoning board?
No, no.
I'll make a motion to approve Scott Sakowski for alternate to zoning board.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, Catherine Turnhousk is also up for the other alternate position on zoning board, any questions or comments? I'll make a motion to approve Catherine Turnhousk for the alternate position on zoning. Is there a second?
Sir.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. There's a vacancy, another vacancy for Deputy Emergency Management Director, Wayne Young, new Wayne Young?
Apparently.
Apparently.
Did you know what this?
Wayne being our chief, it's obviously well knowledgeable of emergency management, first responder issues. Any questions about having Wayne Young serve as a Deputy Emergency Management Director?
No question.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve Wayne Young for Deputy Emergency Management Director. Second by Hoby, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So Rockhampton Planning Commission, Newfield has a position on the Planning Commission, the nomination is for John Keaton to serve in this. John has served as town moderator for twenty-some-odd years or more. He also serves on, been serving on the planning board for a long time, has good knowledge about planning issues. Any questions or concerns about John Keaton serving on the Newfield representative to the Rockhampton Planning Commission? I'll make a motion to approve.
Sir.
All in favor? Aye.
The...
Yep, so we have two positions here for Conservation Commission, and actually, in, in light of the conversation today, I'd probably like to hold these ones over until we have a conversation with the Conservation Commission, given the concerns that have been raised by... been raised by somebody who's been dealing with it. I, you know, I don't know that it's going to be a critical issue to change these nominations, but, uh, in light of the discussion here tonight, I, I, I personally would prefer to hold these ones over unless you guys want to report.
I have no issue with that. I think it needs to be addressed in the trial.
Who are the, who are the?
David Mason and Jeff Kutcher. They're, they're two vacancies, they're, the two members on the Conservation Commission who are up in twenty-two.
Okay. And so, uh, we're holding these over for the reason that?
Well, I, I think the concerns raised here tonight.
Are these the two?
One of the individuals spoke very badly about us.
Okay.
I, I just think it would be appropriate, given, given the, I, I'd like to ask questions then about, about this, given the, the concerns raised by somebody in here in town. But like I said, I, you know, that's my opinion.
We feel that there's some.
Bias?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I think, uh, you know, staying with the.
For example, I became the planning board committee in regards to our three of the little lots and one of them's concern was only with Self- based Land Trust and how it would impact Self- based Land Trust, which had nothing to do with why we sat on the planning board.
So would it be helpful to have those two people come in?
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about. Put it in the public forum so that it's all out in the open?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I'm, I'm suggesting.
Okay, yeah.
Again, I, you know, I, I think it's worth us, given the concerns raised, just having a conversation before we report with the Conservation.
Sure, okay.
Let's hold, let's hold these over.
Sure.
All the other nominations, you, you sign all those? Great. We'll, we'll, uh, put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
So am I confused here? I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Do, do I not have one?
You have Kutcher for the planning board?
Uh, no.
That's supposed to be Conservation.
Conservation.
Because it's such a planning board.
Oh, that should be Conservation.
Alternative, yeah.
That's Conservation. Mike Price, uh, and, uh, Mike Price was the, was up on, on plan.
Okay, so there was Kutcher for the?
Yeah, I, I believe Kutcher and Mason are the two vacancies on Conservation.
Do you have two guys on the planning board? There are three returns, you've got five of these people, should we have two guys?
Uh, Chief, can I ask you, oh, Kent, Kent, can you go get a town report?
It's on the report.
Yeah, it's on the first page of the town report.
Oh, what was he just?
He was saying that there may be two vacancies on the planning board. Oh. And, and Jeff could be one of them, because Jeff serves on both.
Yeah, I think.
The planning board, but I'm not sure whose.
Obstruction dudes.
Right. How convenient.
Right, I think.
Look it up online.
Look it up.
Oh, he's got the report right there.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's Michael, he's the only one in, uh, twenty-four.
On planning?
On the planning board. Robert Hay comes up next year.
Okay.
And the buildings are, uh, absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so, yeah, so that should be Conservation Commission, we're, we're holding them over anyway, so, that's great.
David's position on the Town Council is the treasurer, correct?
Uh, no, he's actually just a member who has been on.
Who's wearing that hat?
Yeah, he, it's not a treasurer, it's on, on, on.
Okay.
I think that's all of them, unless you.
That's it.
You're so, uh.
Are we inviting those two?
Yeah, we, we'll put them on the agenda for the next meeting and, and, great, great,